I think at seven o'clock.
Yep.
How court calls the order and.
Roll call trustee Lam.
Here.
Trustee O'Rourke.
Here.
Trustee Beck.
Here.
Trustee Ransich. Trustee Josie.
Here.
Trustee Benucci. Mayor Collins.
Here.
Roll call for the plant commission. Commissioner Perez. Commissioner Segalbert.
Here.
Commissioner Renzi.
Here.
Commissioner Kiefer. Commissioner Hyman. Commissioner Green.
Here.
Chairman Sokovia.
Here.
We can rise with the pledge.
The Republicans to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're seeking a motion to approve the minutes of the community local workshop held on the Saturday.
Sure, roll for second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thinking that motion carries presidential comments?
Yes, no.
Trustees' comments?
No, I didn't win lottery yet, so we'll try again.
Have there any other trustee comments? This should be the time for public comments. There are no public comments and we'll proceed with the workshop meeting first by the amount of agenda discussion and direction regarding potential zoning code.
Well, I think that's me. Thanks, uh, thanks everyone for coming out on this beautiful winter night and, um, it's a good opportunity, I think, periodically to have the, um, village board and the plant commission get together. It's a nice, uh, informal, uh, setting here. Uh, I know there's a lot of information that passes from the plant commission to the zoning board up to the village board. Uh, village board gets the minutes and, uh, some trustees attend the meetings, but, uh, this is a, a nice way to interact and, uh, really pull together a handful of, uh, different initiatives that have come before the board and the plant commission over the last few months pertaining to, uh, some potential changes to the zoning code, uh, specifically modifications to the site plan review ordinance, uh, and our site ordinance, and, um, how we regulate, uh, a variety of special uses. So, this is really a, a culmination or trying to, to take a comprehensive, uh, pull together of, of a variety of efforts uh, and present, um, some of the key aspects, um, with, with some staff thoughts and recommendations. Uh, we've, we've kind of taken the direction that, uh, has been provided in the past, charted in course, so this is really, uh, one last opportunity for, uh, group, uh, review and discussion for, uh, any course correction that's needed, but, uh, staff's confident that we've, we've got the direction and, and are headed, uh, headed in the direction that the board and the plant commission are looking for. Um, what we have, uh, to discuss tonight is just a, a variety of modifications to the zoning code, and it's hard to believe, but the zoning code was adopted in two thousand six, so, uh, we're coming up on a full decade under this current comprehensive zoning code and I see trustee Lam nodding his head over there. I know you were involved in, in, uh, the mayor as well, involved in, uh, developing the original zoning code. Um, this isn't a comprehensive update to the zoning code, we're really just, um, picking some key parts that, whether it be, uh, through technology changes, uh, that affect how signs are, uh, regulated, uh, changes in the marketplace that might dictate, uh, some different needs for commercial developers, things of that nature, uh, really, uh, what rise these three or four, uh, key topics to the, to the forefront. Um, just to provide some context, um, and I do have slides, the slides are, are real dependent on our discussion, it's really more for the, for the plant commission, the board to discuss, uh, but, uh, to the extent there's, you know, public interested in how the zoning code regulates, um, the uses in the village, and that the purpose of the zoning, zoning code is really primarily, uh, to protect and promote the public health and safety of, of the village and our residents in a variety of ways. Uh, there are some specific aspects of the zoning code, um, to ensure all of us have adequate access to light and air, privacy, things of that nature, um, to prom- promote orderly land use patterns. That's kind of what zoning is most famous for, you know, you don't put the rendering plant next to the, um, next to the house, that kind of thing. Um, but some of the things we're talking about tonight really relate to, um, a few other aspects that are identified as the purpose of the zoning code, and that's really to protect the quality of life for our village residents, uh, to protect the character of our existing residential neighborhoods and to implement the village's policies. Uh, and that's like page one of the zoning code. Here's the intent, the purpose and intent is really, uh, it includes, uh, protecting, uh, the quality of life for our residents and, and protecting the character of our neighborhoods. So what brings this effort before the, the village board and the plant commission tonight? Uh, it has a continuation of our efforts to make sure that, uh, the village is, uh, a good place to do business for our, uh, for our developers as well as for our residents. We wanted to streamline and simplify any of the ordinances, uh, that we could. Uh, we wanted to make sure that, uh, the codes and policies were consistent, uh, throughout and eliminate any, uh, conflicting sections. Uh, of course, we wanted to address, uh, the, the wishes and the input of the village board and the plant commission as it pertains to, uh, any changes you, you might be looking for, uh, again, as things evolve. And, um, we, we did want to at least take a look at, uh, places where we get a lot of variance requests. Um, it's just good planning practice to say, you know, if there are a number of variances that are being requested and, and were specifically being approved, uh, then perhaps it's more appropriate to make the changes to the code itself to eliminate the need for those variances and that unnecessary jumping through hoops. Uh, so that's, those are some of the, the reasons why, uh, why it brings us together tonight. Uh, just in summary, uh, the topics that, uh, we're going to, uh, discuss, uh, include, uh, the potential for changes to, uh, how we regulate fences and corner side yards, uh, taking a look at just a few key aspects of the sign code. Uh, we'll address, uh, some proposed modifications to the site plan review ordinance that I know have been presented to the, uh, plant commission and to the village board recently, uh, as well as, uh, the option and the opportunity to, uh, change how we regulate a handful of uses, potentially making them special uses. And then, of course, as, you know, we gather as a group, it's a good time, uh, if there's any additional questions or comments. So, uh, the approach I'm going to take here, and I'll, I'll just jump right into the corner side yard fences as, uh, as the first example, is really to present, uh, how we do business today, what the current regulations are, uh, whether it's this evening or previously, staff's made some recommendations, uh, on alternatives to how, but those regulations could be implemented. And, uh, I'll, I'll indicate, you know, staff's direction, staff's recommendation and, and the direction we're heading, pending any course correction from, from the group here tonight. In terms of the, uh, corner side yard fences, the board's most likely aware, um, currently the zoning code prohibits uh, fences in the corner side yard, and what that means is a fence can't be placed any closer to the street than the nearest part of the home. Uh, and it really, uh, precludes fencing in, uh, typically a thirty foot area along the corner side street. Uh, and residents, um, sometimes find that that's a hardship for them, whether it be, uh, due to children, you know, who want to have, uh, a secure area to play outside, pets, ghouls, uh, you name it. There's a variety of reasons why we get requests to fence in that corner side yard area. Uh, the pictures that are shown here, uh, they may not be real, real visible, but the reason, uh, the zoning code pro- prohibits fencing in the corner side yards, it's, uh, partially aesthetic. Um, you know, if you have a, a side yard that backs up to a front yard, there's a potential for, uh, somebody's front yard to be fenced in, uh, or to have fencing along, uh, the primary, uh, street elevation there, which would lead to an unattractive streetscape. And there is also a, a safety consideration where if you have a, a fence near an intersection, uh, it could obstruct sightlines and sight visibility. In terms of alternatives, uh, some of the things that have been discussed in the past, uh, and we have just, again, a few pictures here that illustrate the current as well as proposed, uh, but a few, um, potential changes to that. One would be to allow the fencing to go out to the street, uh, at the, the current height that's allowed, uh, six foot maximum height for a fence. Uh, I don't think, uh, staff's not recommending that, and I don't think that the board and the plant commission has identified that as a logical direction to go. Another option would be to allow the fencing out towards the, to the street, uh, but to limit that either the height and/or the style, um, it was been identified as a forty-two foot, excuse me, a forty-two inch, uh, maximum height, which is consistent with what we allow in the downtown area, and also to require it to be a, a open style, i.e. a picket fence. Uh, so that's another alternative. A third option would be to allow the fencing, but not all the way to the property line, but to, um, within ten feet of the property line, so that's a little bit of a hybrid or a combination. And of course, uh, for all of these issues that we're going to discuss tonight, an alternative is simply to maintain the status quo, to say that we, you know, we approved this zoning code, uh, we believe in, in the regulations and the deal are appropriate. Uh, in this case, uh, that is what staff's recommendation would be, uh, that there are, uh, adequate justifications and a rationale for why the, uh, corner side yard regulations were adopted, uh, this way initially. And, uh, so staff would recommend that we continue in this vein, uh, but at this time, uh, enough we've been talking for now, I'll, uh, jump back in and, uh, and take us on to the next issue once we've, uh, addressed this.
Right, discuss these things section by section.
Correct.
I saw them before we moved ahead, good.
So are there any thoughts, uh, different than, uh, John's suggestion that we leave it the way that it currently stands? And, uh, if you come back to the, uh, plant commission and village board on a case-by-case basis, is this something?
My feeling, I think, you know, back to a good practice, I think John referenced this. I think there has been a number of them that have come before the plant commission and the board lately. So as a good practice and just to make it easier for our residents and eliminate what I would describe as, you know, a slight hardship, you know, why not change it and make it more acceptable? I don't know that most people are going to not want to utilize extra square footage in their, in their backyards if they want the fence there. And I think I like the idea of maybe, you know, minimum of ten feet from the sidewalk or the property line. I think that gives you still a nice buffer between it, or maybe you say, maximum fifty percent with a minimum of ten, so they at least get some benefit of that side yard, you know, if, with a minimum of ten feet, but if it's greater than that, maybe we limit it to fifty percent, so they don't just, uh, that's my.
No fifty percent, that'll be opacity of fence?
No, just on the, on its space. So with a ten foot minimum, but if you say if you got thirty feet, maybe then it's a fifteen foot setback. Because back to your point, if the house next to you is their front yard, you don't want extending all, all the way out.
The opacity of a fence, though, is kind of subjective. It's kind of hard to regulate. Well, you can have a fence, but it's gotta be going out, but it's gotta be picket fence, of course. It's gotta be this, gotta be that. I mean, there's always going to be, well, if this is pretty close, you know, and we're going to, we're going to get into a real subjective area here, and I, I don't know that, uh, I personally wouldn't want to go, wouldn't want to go there. And my, my, my daughter lives in Orland Park, in the, uh, in an older section, old, uh, Orland Park, and they didn't, uh, they didn't have any restrictions on fences. And, uh, the sightlines down the street are, are terrible. Uh, corner, uh, corner visibility is bad. Uh, um, two days a week I pick up my grandson at a, at a bus stop and, uh, the, the bus driver has trouble seeing around the corner. I don't know, uh, my, uh, my feeling and, uh, the general feeling, uh, when this came before the plant commission was to, um, leave it the way it is.
The reason I, I would agree with, uh, so Sokovia for that, I, I know where you're, you're at with this, and, and there is some ability that, I'm thinking of subdivisions and, first of all, homeowners association, how they feel about everything, because, I mean, I get, had several calls on just a variety of things that aren't even fences and it's, you know, but what one person thinks is beautiful, the next one doesn't. And the only reason I thi- I think if you want it badly enough, you'll come and ask the question, I ask for the variance. If, I think if you make it just open, you're going to have that, you're going to have people putting kind of whatever they want out there, and if there's no effort to them to do that, I think you are going to have a variety of, and then you're going to have, then we're going to have people all coming in here saying, well, you know, I went to this subdivision, these were the rules you had, now you changed them, now it looks like this, and I don't like the way it looks, and, you know, so I, I do understand.
Really only have about.
I agree.
Two, uh, two zoning variance requests for fences a year, if even. Some years we only get one, and, uh, and it's not like we never, we never, uh, recommend it. Uh, in many cases we have. Uh, the homeowners are able to make a case for one reason or another. But for instance, a, a house on the corner of a, a busy arterial like one hundred and thirty-fifth or, or something like that, and, and they're at the end of the block, and, uh, they're, and sightlines are not a problem. Uh, we, I think we had one on, um, Remick Road, uh, Fraser, Fraser probably. And, uh, again, there was, in fact, we got in trouble with the homeowners association on it. We, we recommended approval and the homeowners association did a backflip. Uh, it's not as though we, we never, uh, we never approved them, but because, because we do, and then probably half the cases.
Is there a large clamor for the change, or is it just a couple of people in here?
I, I personally, I have not heard, I don't know.
Well, if there's no large clamor for a change, why not leave it status quo? And if the process is arduous as far as getting the variance, maybe we should focus on the process of getting the variance rather than.
Well, it really isn't that arduous, uh, you know, freehand drawings, uh, I mean, we accept, you know, verbal, uh, verbal, verbal arguments and stuff like that. We're not, we're not hard rock into, uh, blueprints and architectural drawings and whatnot.
But you did, you did make a statement that the homeowners have to make a case when they come before the.
Yeah, and, and they, and they have in, in, in several, in several instances.
Right, and I, but I also think that there's been kind of a reputation out there that it's not going to be approved unless it is a special situation. And I don't know that we need to make it a special situation for somebody to be able to enjoy more of their backyard. That's all I think.
I understand the point, uh, I've, you know, been on the board enough to review a number of these that have gone through, and every one of them, uh, at least as far as I'm concerned, the decision's made to protect the neighborhood, because you're absolutely right, if you allow to go out there, it's going to change the neighborhood, everybody's going to do it, and, uh, homeowner comes in, they know what they want, but who's representing the home, the, the neighborhood? That's us. And so I like the way it is, let them come in and make their case. And the cases where we have approved it, basically they don't interfere with any of the neighbors. Either back up to Woods or, or something else, uh, or maybe Arby's, you know. So I, I have no problem with it coming through, but the process is not that arduous. It does go through the plant commission, it does go through the board. Uh, there is, I've attended the meetings enough to know, and it's, takes some time, but the right decision is made, I think, as far as the community. I think that's what we represent, is that how it impacts the community. I'd like to see it stay the way it is, but I think it works.
You know, it's kind of a, uh, and the issue can always be a two-way sword. Uh, you know, I, certainly some of these cases in the past, I voted against them because I didn't feel those, you know, Arby's have made their case that it wouldn't affect their neighbors. Uh, you know, the thing you always have to look at is, and I know Jim said before, is, you know, their side yard is potentially someone else's front yard. You always have to think, you know, why, why is this person, you know, what is it that they feel that gives them the right to essentially, you know, project their, you know, so-called backyard into someone else's front yard? They generally never think about what it's going to do to their neighbor, how it's going to affect them. And, I mean, it's, the problem is, if, if we do change it and, and essentially it's thereby right, we're basically saying that, you know, this person's corner side yard is more important than their neighbor's front yard. And, and I, what I was thinking, why did this person buy that corner lot? What was it, why did they want to live on a corner? And, you know, it'd always be interesting to find out, you know, did they do it because they thought they had more open space? Or they, you know, only wanted a neighbor to come directly on one side? Well, you know, people I'm sure have their reasons, but I don't think we should be encouraging people to feel that by right, you know, that they have that right for that, that side yard that then essentially obstructs their neighbor's front yard. And I, you know, and like you said, there's a lot of cases where it won't affect the neighbors, and yeah, I mean, we've had a few the, the last year that made a lot of sense, who they have one a little dead on the street, up against a berm, didn't affect anybody. We had one, you know, that was all already screened in by pine trees, you never would have even seen it. You know, they had a few like that, so there's always, you know, I think opportunities where it could happen, but I just don't think we want to give people the ability to, that they have the right to do it, you know.
I think that, um, as it's written now, it's pretty good, because if there's any traffic safety issues that come up, um, you know, we can review it, or if there's not a traffic safety issue, sightlines are okay, sight triangles, I can't have been, um, there's a chance to plead their case, so, uh, I mean, we could, you know, approve it, so. I think, uh, how we have it now gives a bit of, uh, more protection against making some hazards for turning movements and I think, so, I think it's good as it is.
Any other thoughts or comments?
I just, I just had a comment or question, it, it sounds like the consensus is going towards leaving the status quo, and I think there's probably a number of residents out there that don't understand there is a variance process because they're just, they don't know about it. Would it be possible to maybe add some language, maybe to the permit application, explaining, you know, that there is a variance process regarding fences, the corner, the corner house?
Sure, and I, I think for the most part, I don't. I don't want to speak for Ken, but I, I feel like between the building department and the planning department, um, you know, when the concern arises, um, this certainly is the opportunity for that discussion, dialogue.
Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just curious, some people might just come and pull up or go online and fill the form and, and never speak, just submit it, you know.
Yeah, I think when it, when it comes up most often, it's, somebody either assumes they can fence in that area or that they want to go about and they'll apply for a fence permit, and that's the, the time when the building department.
We did quite a few phone calls, I think, we do, um, they, you know, they do have the option, go to the planning, find for variance. Uh, also we choose not too much to tell them for the recent line. Uh, the biggest issue that we get, we get a lot of complaints after people do things also, is, uh, not so much out of the corner of your lap, but what's your butt up in the neighbor's lap? In their driveways, five feet off the property line. Your fence is setback ten feet, there's no way you'll see a kid riding the bike. And they're always calling up complaining about that the neighbor's, what's your shrubs and everything else, lacking the safety of their children. It's what we hear.
Well, we don't control landscaping, cars, it's good.
No. That's as we would, they get safety.
Well, they could apply, that's the, the clause that, that's talking about to virtually all the permits if the resident would want to come in for a question. I mean, it may save them money.
Oh, yeah, there's, people come in for, uh, because the driveway's going to encroach on the, uh.
Well, to be open and honest, it, it saved the consumer money in certain circumstances if they were to get deck A versus deck B, and had they known about the variance process, they may have saved themselves hundreds of thousands of dollars on deck A when they thought they had to get deck B to be compliant, so I think that is some, some merit.
Okay.
I have a couple of thoughts. Um, I've served on the planning commission, I think I remember when the first application came in Liberty Grove, a neighbor of mine about three blocks away or so had a disabled child. They brought thirty-some odd pages of documentation showing the child is suffering autism. Their current, uh, grating of their yard was, they have somewhat of a sharp angle. Uh, there are a lot of other health, uh, issues that they're concerned about having their child in Orland Park. Uh, we went ahead and approved that, and I remember there was a stipulation that if the child condition changes or if they move.
I think they went to court, didn't you, Eric?
That's a good question, and that's something that I'd like to.
I think it went to court and, uh, the judge approved it on the, um, on the condition that should the, uh, medical condition change, or if the house is sold, then the fence had to come down.
I believe we approved it with the stipulation that.
Oh, oh.
Comes down when they move or the child.
Oh, okay.
Changes, so yeah, I, I do believe we approved it, and I guess I'm wondering, um, since then we've had maybe one or two others, from the best of my memory, and there weren't stipulations that, you know, the fence has to come down or X, Y, Z. There may have been other factors that, um, contributed to the acquittal process, such as it wasn't in such a tight residential area, it was up against, you know, a perjury.
The one I remember was, uh, it backed up to Walmart.
Yeah, exactly. So maybe no sense in saying, yeah, but take it down when you move, because there was an underlying condition based on a, uh, an illness or, or a condition upon the children. So, I just wanted to touch on that, that he did bring a lot of documentation, it was the first one that we looked at and approved. Um, and Mr. Chairman, you did mention also that, um, the tongue and groove would essentially, would be too hard to regulate. Um, I think I may be the minority here with trustee O'Rourke in wanting to actually see some sort of a change to the ordinance. I'm not a fan of having a six-foot stockade tongue and groove fence with no visibility up to the sidewalk or ten feet off of someone else's driveway. I do believe that would actually, um, in my opinion, create a, a safety issue. We've also, um, in other cases, um, for example, when we look at our, um, building ordinances, we've dissertated how an individual builder can build a house and have different types of control on the outside. So I don't think it's entirely impossible if we were to look at something that's a compromise between the minority and majority of the opinions here this evening, um, on some sort of an open fence, um, of its specific height with the, um, actual material separated, so it's not tongue and groove, so it would not be a stockade privacy fence. Um, the other thing that's been brought up again is safety, and I've already touched on that. Again, I don't think bringing it, you know, six foot to the sidewalk with no visibility is a good idea. Um, but we have brought up landscaping, so if we're going to talk about safety, and that's brought up tonight, why are, I think we should be consistent then and look at what our legal options are on landscaping. And I'm not saying I'm in favor of legislating landscaping, but if we're truly concerned about safety and not upsetting the status quo and saying, hey, you know what, let's make a change here, let's do something different than we've done for the last ten years in this ordinance. If safety's really a concern, why aren't we looking at landscaping as well? I can easily, or I shouldn't say I, but I can definitely, um, go online and look at different types of bushes, trees that are more of a permanent structure than a fence, which is a temporary structure, that could easily block the view of the neighbor, their front yard or encroach on their front yard. So I guess as far as consistency, if we're saying we're not going to do it because of safety, I think we need to look at what our legal options are on landscaping. Um, the other thing then that I would, um, essentially, um, touch on would be the actual process. I, I agree with what trustee, uh, Wojo had mentioned about maybe, um, letting residents know that it's, you know, there's a process in order to apply to get some sort of a variance and have a, a corner lot fence. I guess if we're going to do that, though, that's a great idea. What steps are we going to take to better communicate with our residents and say, you know what? The majority of the board did not agree, and the plant commission did not agree to update this ordinance, but how are we going to make it that much easier? Are we going to, according with our marketing department, um, with Amy essentially, and have her put something with water bill, or how are we actually going to better communicate to our residents that they can do this? There's a very small portion of residents that have corner lots. Most of them that I've spoken with typically say, hey, I want to put a corner fence up, and my answer is, well, it's, you know, it's a process and you have to apply for, um, you know, variance. So, well, I guess what can we do then from a staff level if we're not going to come to a compromise between majority and the, and the minority here tonight?
My recommendation would just add is a permit.
Yeah, that's mine too, and that's just the fence permit.
Yeah, what we can do, actually, the nice thing is, is with the, uh, software upgrade the village board approved at the last meeting, we are changing out all of our permits, and, uh, Ken has already started working on that. Uh, in fact, we're going to start in the building department, uh, you know, we're speaking with this, uh, new software. Um, and, uh, I don't want to speak too much for Ken, but he's enjoying having the cold weather come through because it's given him and the staff a chance to start working on, uh, putting these, uh, permits together. Uh, but the, the idea is we're redesigning all of the permit applications as it is, so that we have a much more, uh, valuable, uh, source for him and his department, and, uh, we, we can include this language, so that's, uh, the hope is that all those, uh, changes will be in place actually by, uh, March first, hopefully, which is when our new, uh, when the new, uh, building codes take effect, so, um, we, we, the timing for that is questionable.
Because if you're going to put a fence up, you need to get a permit.
Right.
And so, with planning and building, you can tell whether to put it in place is questionable, you can, uh, put it in a form so much so better.
Well, I guess anytime a permit is, is rejected, there should, there should be a, a means of, of appealing it.
Well, yeah.
But I think the other point that they're making is, if I don't know, that's an option, and I already know that I can't put my fence that close because that's not the village's code, and my neighbor says, no, you can't put it there, it's not the village code. I'm not going to know enough as the average citizen out there to be able to know to come and contest it. And I think that's your point, that you want to get something out there that says, you know, this is the, these are the standards, however, you know, there is a process in place, something that kind of.
I mean, it could be a deck, if somebody wants to put a deck over it that's going to encroach on the, uh, lap line, uh, or a patio or something. Uh, there's probably a, any number of reasons why.
Sheds.
People would, uh, want, want to appeal, uh, a rejection.
Sheds are the bigger one for that, encroaching issue.
I think sheds on the side lots especially, that's not, definitely not a good idea. So I guess, if we address every concern that everyone in the majority that has, uh, an objection to modifying the, uh, the ordinance, um, if we were to address, let's say, the tongue and. So, I guess if we address every concern that everyone in the majority that has an objection to modifying the ordinance, if we were to address, let's say, the tongue and groove issue that Mr. Chairman had mentioned, if we were to fix the issue of having it too close to a driveway, as Mr. Goska mentioned. Is this panel then willing to look at some sort of a compromise and maybe change the ordinance and have, whether it's a three-foot fence, four-foot fence with separated wood, only X amount of feet off the side lot, whether it's ten feet, fifteen feet, no more than, or no less than twenty-five feet off the sidewalk or a driveway, is that something we're willing to do this evening?
And I, I'm all for leaving things the way they are.
I'd agree, I don't know how you can manage, we have so much to manage now that we're getting calls on that, that's just going to put another whole layer of how do you manage all that? It's, it's, I think it's, I don't, I don't see how you can feasibly do it with the amount of staff we have to really manage all that. I would leave it and let, if somebody really wants something to change, they're going to call up and ask the questions. And again, I go back to homeowners associations, you make a change here, you know, I moved into this subdivision, so it would look like this, and now you're changing it to allow it to look like that. Arbitrarily across the board, people are going to do what they want. I think, I think you're going to have a lot of issues with that. I, I would, I would leave it and I would just make it available, make it known, and then if somebody wants something badly enough, they're going to come in and ask it. Then that's the time to say, you know what, we can do this if, if maybe this is.
And we can, we can afford to compromise at that point too.
But let me ask you this, and so it sounds like majority doesn't want to change anything, but do you feel like if we were to get a case before us, that there has to be a special circumstance? Or if it meets the aesthetics and the safety issues, then that's enough?
I would think if it meets, it's, it's going to be a case by case basis, but I think if it meets that, yeah, I'm not saying it has to be like a health issue, or like as, as trustee Peck mentions, child was an extreme issue, I remember that from way back, but that was, but again, something like that. It, it, does their family still live there? And if they aren't still there, did someone take that fence out?
I think it was, I think the fence was removed, wasn't it?
Was it? I would be, I would be surprised if something, yeah.
I believe they sold the house, and I believe the fence was removed.
I'm just saying, I.
I think once they get it built, they're.
Yeah, yeah, you, you, you would have a really hard time going back to something.
They're going to hold teeth to get rid of it.
Yeah.
Because we had.
I don't care what's in, what's in the dock.
We had a guy put up a fence and, and look the other way, and, and building enforcement caught it, and he had a whole, whole list of reasons, well, I was out of town and I didn't know, and this guy could did this, and I was only talking about that, and the next thing you know, he's got a chain link fence in the front yard surrounding his house.
Well, it's better to ask for forgiveness than to.
Well, that's what he was trying to pull. Didn't work. Well, I think, I'm pretty sure the village took him to court and the judge said, pick it up.
Yeah, I'm open to changes, that'd answer your question. I'm open, I'm open to people bringing their case forward, I just, I just wouldn't want to change it.
I don't think it's that much effort to, for the zoning board of appeals only meets every three months, roughly every three months anyway. We, we don't, we don't have that much business.
And I guess I wasn't trying to imply that it was that, but I think, what I think will deter some people is not only the knowledge of not knowing the process, but then also having to make that special case, as opposed to just media aesthetics.
Well, it's got to be a reason.
Not that they want, that they want to increase their backyard.
Not, I just, I just want to make a guarantee.
It's not good enough, why not?
No, it isn't.
Why not?
Because it's, because for all the reasons we've, we've talked about tonight.
We've got a lot more to cover, I think we've got our direction to staff, if you guys don't mind. I'll tell you though, our residents are not shy in pushing us to do more for them, I can promise you that. Yeah, we do not have wildebeest flowers in our community, but if they want something, they know how to ask, I just want to make sure you, you know, from the stories that I get to enjoy hearing from residents as well as John, Ken, and Alan. John can also attest to our, we, we have some, folks want something, they know how to ask, we're not going to question them.
Keep that to twenty seconds, I promise. So, if we do move forward in this direction then, is there a specific objective criteria that an applicant is going to have to meet to get past the planning commission?
Well, we, we can't, we can't foresee that, that's why it's done on a case by case basis here.
So, it's essentially subjective based on what each individual planning commissioner feels is going to be good or bad at that.
Well, I, I hesitate to call it totally subjective.
First of all, it's not, no, it, that's, that's not right, it's not what the planning commission feels.
It's not asking.
It never is. Because as a planning commissioner, I took an oath as did everyone else here, and we serve at the discretion and at the basically acceptance of the mayor and the board, or the trustees. So, we don't interject our opinion. There have been times when my opinion would be a hundred and eighty degrees opposite the way I vote, but I vote because of the way I have mandated to. Whether it's because there's an existing annexation agreement, doesn't matter whether I agree with the terms or not, if there is, that's why I vote, and that's the way it goes. And the same thing with whatever is in the zoning, or whatever is in the planning commission, whether it's a handbook, or residency, or anything, that's what we use as a guideline. And that's why we wanted to come in today, to better understand what all the trustees were looking for, to not be out on an island making decisions of ourself. And that is not what we do. We are the advisory board, we ask the questions that the trustees don't have time to ask. We put the people through their paces to ensure, because they all swear to tell the truth, and half of them lie, at least now. Well.
Forty seconds.
Yeah, so, in a short answer to your question is, no, it's always what would the board do? And not what the planning commissioner would do, and that's how we look.
So, do you have any direction?
I, I do, and as I, as we move on to the next topic here, I should indicate, my planned approach to this is really to prepare a comprehensive set of amendments that would come forward at one time. Some of this has been partly through the process, I know the planning commission's considered the fence question, considered a few other things. The board's, you know, been presented this at committee of the whole in the recent board meetings, so really looking to get everything over the goal line as a package. And there will be an opportunity to, you know, to vote, the, the board ultimately will, will approve of any changes, if there are changes to come forward ahead of us. So, having said that.
Chairman, report three. The, the downtown, I know it's been mentioned that, but is there actually, is it actually written in, or is it only words for the downtown, to allow the front yard, bicket type?
Yeah, it's called an R one overlay, which is kind of a, the historic or, or the.
Basically, it's assigned to the chomp down sign district.
A little bigger than that, but same idea.
But I mean, that certainly is allowing the front yard and theoretically the corner side yard almost really up to the sidewalk anywhere on their lot, right, based on the street. But I, I'm sure you've got some aesthetics in that, right?
Yeah, maximum height, again, similar.
High aesthetic, so, what everybody was saying, I mean, I think that's what, if there was going to be a variance request for somebody to do this, that would be the aesthetic direction everybody would want to go. Nobody would want to see a six-foot solid board fence, you know, coming out of the corner side yard, there's kind of, I'm uncertain of that. But from the aesthetic standpoint, I think we could agree what's already, you know, kind of located in downtown, might be, you know, the direction we'd be going. You know, you know, that kind of takes with us being subjective about it, it's like, okay, if you're interested in going for a variance, you have to understand, this is the only type of fence you would even propose. You're not going to take your six-foot stockade fence out towards the street, and that's my point, so.
Well, I think I put the most complicated one first, so it's all downhill from here, smooth sailing ahead. We're going to briefly touch on three of the key components of the sign code. One has to do with the size of monument signs, in terms of not just the, the height, maximum height of the structure itself, but the sign area. We'll talk about LED signs, as that technology continues to evolve, and then a staff recommendation pertaining to the central sign district. In terms of monument signs, we've had a handful of variance requests for increasing the height of monument signs, and what, the common theme for, for those has been, when Route fifty-nine was reconstructed several years back, it changed the elevation of the road. I know the planning commissioners, the board are familiar with that rationale, that justification for increasing the height. But it does at least allow an opportunity to say, is, is our current regulation appropriate, we would like to increase it. The current monument signs can be ten feet in height, including any architectural elements, and the maximum sign area is forty-eight square feet for the face of the sign per side. For larger developments, there's a proposal that perhaps just by right, out of the box, they could have a, up to fifteen feet in height for a monument sign and a larger sign face. We have a couple of examples, the one on the right was approved by plan development, that's a, that's a larger sign, more in height and sign area than what's currently allowed by, by right, so that, that's a plan development. The options that staff is, is presenting include, you know, allowing something larger by right, allowing something as a plan development, or just saying, you know, let's stick with our ten feet in height, forty-eight square feet in sign area. Staff feels that more likely than not, any big box, any new large retail development would be a plan development, and the signage could be incorporated into that. So, staff's recommendation is essentially would require a change to the, to the current code, but to allow for taller and larger sign area as part of future plan development considerations.
So, in other words, maybe a ten-foot high current standard, but when a new development came in, they asked, they used a different.
That's another case where we have some variances around the light source. We said they could have a higher sign and also a bigger sign, because that whole strip mall, if you will, is invisible. And I think we have an obligation to encourage business in some with signage, but I think it should be done on a variance basis, that needs to have a special situation. The target one we talked about, we did approve that to be sure, but we had a problem because of the tree blocking it, and nobody's ever taken the tree out, the tree's still in the picture, and it can still be. So, I mean, it's, they need to, and they've had trouble with the owner of the development as well as trying to get things up. You walk drive down, and it's not visible until it's almost at the top of the place, so. I don't think we ought to go fifteen feet across the board, that's going to change things substantially in town, changes the street scheme. I don't recommend that, I do think we ought to permit variances in plan development, I like that idea, because although traditionally we don't put the signage in the plan development, we're saying that we will now do so, and I think that's an excellent idea, instead of separating that. And others, I think, you know, if they feel that they're having hardship of some sort, you know, bring it for variances, have a, a process that permits us at least discussing. As, you know, John Renzi was saying, that if the planning commission makes recommendations, the village board makes policy decisions. So, if we choose to say, okay, we want something different, we have the right to do that, based on their input and what we feel is appropriate. I think that's a good way to leave it, I have no problem with these things coming to the village board, I don't find them excessive, I think it's a good way to find out.
Ken, how many of those do you have here, maybe one?
Nah, two or three, but that, that doesn't, doesn't really matter, it's still not onerous, if you will, and I think it does allow us to respond to the community's interests, and this is, I think this is well worked on. The process is fine as far as I'm concerned, I just leave it alone, put it in the plan development, I think is an excellent idea, we've not done that before, but it's a good place to.
Yeah, ordinarily, in a planned unit development, we, the signs are separate, are separate agreements.
They have been, I think we need to, they proposed we change that, and I think that makes good sense, is change it, cover it all at the same time, because what makes sense is you can look at upfront and see what makes sense, while you're looking at the whole development, so.
The, the only other thing I would say is that point of measurement may be something that we can look at too, in there, that have it ten feet, if you want to have the height, that's measured by the side of the road. So, that way, if there's any culvers, like when they raise the road, be it the curves on thirty or fifty-nine, well, everybody knows that's ten feet, if you're five feet below, that's a fifteen-foot sign, but we will call it ten feet, because it's ten feet from the road. And if we write it that way in the policy, then there won't be any guesswork either by the applicant or by us as commissioners when we sit on the planning commission, because the only question we say is, well, where did you measure it from? If the guy says, well, I measured it from the spot the sign is going to go, then we would say, no, how far is it, we extend out the road? Oh, well, when we extend out the road, it's like fourteen feet. Oh, that's fine, the road then dropped, or raised twenty, which we will get, the four feet. And so, that way, even administratively, staff can deal with that, when the application comes in, or in a non-HUD, when the person comes in, well, no, we need it to be measured from the street, and if it's in the ordinance.
And that makes great sense, because you could go the other way too, where somebody fills a firm up, so they can get additional three or four feet to the top of the, of their firm, so that's a great point.
Yeah, and, and I think I like, I like the idea too, as Bill stayed too, as, as you have up there, as part of the plan development, because you bring together the whole vision, it's all tied together, you see what it's going to look like. I will tell you that we, we may allow them to have a bigger sign down where their plaza is, but to tell you the truth, I don't think it's benefiting them as much as they think, because everybody, there's so many businesses in there, and everybody's sign is this big in the same red and white lettering. And when you're driving by, if you know something's there, then it's going to catch your eye possibly, but if you're looking, and all of a sudden you go by, and you don't realize something's there, it's not going to catch your eye to look into that. So, I think some of that's just the whole design concept too, and I think bringing that in with the rest of the development, you know, it's, it's going to make them, I think, a developer put a little more into the whole beauty of it, for lack of a better term, but I do like the points that Mr. Renzi made as well, I like, I like the height idea measured from that point.
Everybody likes that idea.
What they said.
Okay. I like, the only thing I would add is, you know, about the PD, I like that idea, but maybe if we would consider it with a certain amount of, minimum amount of square footage, in other words, a bigger medium box, it wouldn't just be for, like, a small script site, or they designated this to PD, and they come back and they want this huge sign out front. And then also with that, I think, we also, our maybe margin point was, we might want to also include, as we're looking at the whole PD, building signers, because that always becomes something, because as you set further back, maybe we want to allow a little bit more building sign, or larger building sign, to get that visibility that we normally wouldn't get out the road.
Um, the next topic has to do with the LED signs, and just to refresh the, you know, the collective groups, so remember here, electronic message boards and LED signs are allowed, but they can't be more than fifty percent of the sign area currently. So, as we're talking about monument signs, today as we speak, the maximum size is forty-eight square feet for the sign, a message board could be half of that, or by default, the largest a message board could be would be twenty-four square, square feet. This is an area where, as the technology enhance, improves, and I think the cost of some of these sign systems becomes more attainable, some businesses are looking at LED signs, even as their primary exclusive sign, they'd like to have a hundred percent of their sign, the animated message board. Staff feels that this would be somewhat of a concern, that, and as you've got a couple of the next slide, certainly there's a risk of being detrimental to the community character, as we think back to what the, you know, purposes intended of the zoning code is, they're really maintaining and enhancing quality of life. We work hard as a group, staff, as appointed officials and elected officials, to have the commercial buildings that are constructed here in the village represent the quality and the character we'd like to see. Signage is certainly one way that, that can take away from that larger effort. So, in anticipating that there would be some comfort in having some larger signs, this is a discussion we just concluded, staff is, is looking to still maintain a handle on the size of message boards. So, say we go to a sixty-square-foot monument sign, that could be a thirty-square-foot potentially message board or larger. Staff's proposal is just to maintain what's currently allowed, a twenty-four-square-foot message board, make that the maximum regardless of how large monument sign ultimately could become. So, that's the direction staff would head, barring any, you know, additional input or redirection here.
I would agree with that sort of thing.
I would too, I'm not looking for changing the character of the town by allowing LED signs in the street, in excess of the allotted range we currently have.
I think that the fifty percent makes sense, we, we talked to thirty percent one time, I would say we're up to fifty, and I, I think that works for us. We're going to talk anything about the motion on these signs? One of the things the original sign artists had is that we try to make sure they didn't have a lot of moving signs, so our story, LED signs certainly could, we want to put that in here as well, that the.
Uh, as it's currently drafted, the messages are not permitted to change any more frequently than seven seconds.
Okay, as long as it's not a motion type, which is what we objected to when we originally put the thing together, so, we all felt that it was just not inherent for planning officials, at least on recollection, we all felt that. We all felt that.
In character. Right in the standard too, if I remember correctly, we got that issue with the McDonald's that was enough that what did it turn down?
Yeah, there's the things you learn, NITS, night, nighttime intensity levels and different measurements and so forth. So yeah, we, we do have a couple protections in there for frequency and intensity of lighting. There's a daytime standard and a nighttime standard. What's bright during the day is very bright at night, so.
Is there, I always notice, is there a dumb question, this might be one, is there an easy way to read that if we do feel somebody is outside of the lines?
If it bothers your eyes, it probably failed to miss. No, I, I'm just, I'm joking, but truly that's how we learned of this was actually getting complaints from people driving by when it first opened up and even McDonald's acknowledged that, yes, this is too much and they voluntarily adjusted it, so.
They volunteered?
They did.
It was the first thing they forgot.
They did, they did a nice job of responding to that.
Okay, and then unless I'm cutting off some, some input, the last sign question has to do with the central sign district. Excuse me. The central sign district in our current zoning code is adopted to really reflect the nature and the character of the businesses downtown. It's a little bit different setting than on, you know, Route fifty nine, on our major commercial corners. The code calls for the signage to be designed in a manner that is, just reflects the, the architecture of the buildings themselves. What's most common is a sandblasted wood sign. That's not, that's not imposed by the code, but that's just what, what people tend to do. It prohibits any interior illuminated signs, so no box signs, internal channel letters, things of that nature. Currently, the, the boundary had to be drawn somewhere in Main Street, Route one twenty six is the boundary to the north, so it encompasses the property south or, or east of Main Street. But properties on the north side of the street, even though they're the same location, are outside of the boundary of the central sign district. Likewise, Route fifty nine is the boundary to the east and by default, properties on the west side of Route fifty nine are in, properties on the east side of Route fifty nine are out. So this proposed change is really just a common sense change that says, let's make the businesses on both sides of the street part of the district for Main Street and for Route one twenty six, for, excuse me, Main Street, Route one twenty six and Route fifty nine. For Route fifty nine, the change would extend from Main Street from the north down to Chicago Street to the south. And so this is fairly straightforward.
You specify the width for those, because you've got to take the full property.
The width, just the, the business is trending, so the, essentially the front edge on Route fifty nine or the front edge on Main Street.
How far back can they put a sign? Maybe want to specify the width.
Oh, I see your.
The box on the right side is coming down from.
Well, you could say visible, visible from, Main Street visible from Route fifty nine.
As long as it comes to something on that property.
It would be the whole parcels, yeah, it would be the entire.
Not including the whole thing all the way to the river, for instance. You're just trying to make sure that the front area, so both sides are treated the same, but I would think you need to specify in case somebody says, well, I want to put it back a little further, make sure that if they put it back a little further, it doesn't cause a problem, whatever it is.
Okay, yeah, staff's intent would be to, to incorporate the entire parcels on either side. Okay, great.
I mean, that's, John, that's just good zoning practice, you know, in terms of you always want to pick up the street skate at both sides of the street, like, you know, stop the street and you want to see the other street skate. My other question would be, so you're stopping at the south end because that's the south boundary of that district right now?
Correct.
But it sure seems like, I mean, in terms of what the business transition, so it should be nice to think we keep going at least down to, you know, Route thirty, oh, you know, at least on both sides because of the business transition, you know what I'm saying?
The good thing is business transition zoning has its own limitations on signage, so the size is smaller and I think you get to the same place.
So we pretty much still keep it, because I know we've got even going out of thirty we've got, so new business transition. It seems like the signage is, is all perfectly appropriate, you know, out of place.
Uh, great, then that's it for signs. Now we have just a handful of, again, I'm hitting the highlights. I know the histrion, the trustees have seen this, the area trustees. In terms of site plan review, there are, is the potential to adjust what building materials are identified as permitted, both for multifamily apartments as well as for townhomes. And then we'll just discuss briefly the issue of what setback, how to setback or address the buffering separation for drive-throughs from residential districts. In terms of the building materials for both multifamily and townhomes, we currently regulate all development other than single family homes and duplexes through site plan review. So if you're doing something other than a single family house or duplex, you apply for site plan review, come before the planning commission, ultimately the village board, and that site plan review will get approved. That's true whether it's a, you know, two hundred thousand square foot shopping center or a four unit townhouse or, you know, anything else. So the planning commission and the board have a great deal of discretion and review for each case that comes through. Staff's suggestion as opposed to prohibiting or regulating or mandating all brick, for example, that would be an easy thing to do, or saying it has to be brick, stone or fiber cement board is another option. But staff's suggestion is to maintain that review on a case by case basis through site plan review, recognizing that the planning commission and the board will have a chance to, to review and, and vote. You know, staff believes that there are well-designed projects that might incorporate a material that otherwise on the face of it would sound good to regulate against. There are some additional considerations, whether it be cost, architectural style and so forth, that may make it appropriate to have a variety of materials. And staff believes the appropriate time to consider that would be, well, reviewing a specific case, a specific set of elevations as opposed to trying one size fits all in the upfront. So that's a rationale, like staff's recommendation here.
I mean, I've gone on the record before, I don't, I don't have a problem with final side. And I don't think it makes sense necessarily maybe for the whole structure, but I certainly think it should be maintained as part of one of the proof materials of a builder as an option to work with. So I like your recommendation and I would support that.
I would, I would support staff's recommendation also.
I just have, with the o, options that are available, that can be open ended figuring those people are going to be designing so we don't have such as, for examples of what is previously prohibited that may not be. Well, I'm saying, like, what are you envisioning the final book to walk by?
Good question. I should be a little bit more direct. The, the, the potential change here was to essentially rule out vinyl siding or to require, you know, brick, stone or fiber cement board as another natural material. So this is a case where staff is essentially saying, we'll leave things as they have been where the natural materials are certainly recommended in a higher percentage, but staff would work with the builder to make sure that the elevations comply with our residential design guidelines. So that's, the frame of reference would be back to the design guidelines. Sounds like we're, we're fairly in good consensus on that.
More or less, but maybe a little more elaboration. And stone, you're talking about real stone, not synthetic stone?
Uh, well, a cultured stone certainly would be appropriate and something that could be considered as well, so.
That'd be considered and actually approved upfront or just something.
Actually, when I was putting in a fireplace, I liked stone, our cultured stone. And the, the way the man explained to me is the cultured stone has better fire protection capability than real stone. Real stone tends to expand and crack, whereas the cultured stone tends not to. So there, there, in some, in, at least in some cases, the cultured stone is a more durable product.
Well, I just want to include another one that I've brought up a number of times in the past, fiber cement board is very heavy and certainly very durable, thing which I think from looking at things in Lakeland's, like, three or four years, smart boards are something which engineered wood, which are very good. They're not vinyl, they're very much like wood, but they're better. And I think it's the same category as the cultured stones. We want to include that or have that come for a board decision of any development. I don't know. I'm tired to say that they're, they're acceptable. I do have a problem with vinyl because there are only so, there's so many different vinyl grades. There's some that are very cheap and there's some that are expensive. Uh, you know, I think we're better off excluding that. The easiest way to keep them out is to leave it like this and finally just keep it like this and handle on a case by case basis. But I think there are other things which are currently acceptable that are recently up to date, if you will, and maybe better than some of the others. We don't show drive-in up there, for instance, which there's a lot of in town, which is, not because it's not, because it's not, not because it's not a good product, because it's usually not installed properly and you're going to have problems afterwards, so it's gotten a bad name. But again, I don't have a problem with the current thing. As long as we have some flexibility, we understand there are other things which are acceptable and we, if somebody wants to present those, let's seriously consider it.
The nice thing about site plan review is more often than not, we'll have actual material samples, you know, material boards and somebody's supposed to regulating generically or requiring an architectural grade of vinyl or something like that, we'll, we'll have an architect and actual material that we can see. So that's, that's helpful.
That's a great idea because that's what we've done well with the Lakeland's. We want to see the samples so we can make any judgment. So if we're doing that as part of the process, make sure people understand that we expect to see the samples upfront and be great. And I think we're low free, we'll wind up with something that's just going to go and work.
And they have to take those samples with them and they'd be great.
We have workdays, we have, well, we cleaned out the basement. We had the opportunity, we could have built a Katrina Village here with all the materials.
All the same materials that were in the basement. By the way, we still have a model of the polo club in the basement if anybody is ever interested in that, slightly moving to your basement.
What I'd like to add is, you know, I, I think the technology has changed a lot, you know. I mean, I, I think when I was originally on the plan, it was about fifteen years ago. Of course, we're in a period of very rapid growth and there were a lot of multifamily projects going through then and, you know, I, I look at the buildings now that we have put in and, you know, I look at the quality materials on them and it's just, I don't think it, they're going to continue to hold up, you know, the way we've dealt with it. I think with these little and higher standards, I think, you know, I'm looking to never regret, you know, trying to give or fulfill those materials because, you know, the days of vinyl siding and nail on, you know, masonry or over really, I don't think, number one, you're not going to see developments of that scale again, you know, we're going to want to control those kind of, you know, more great materials. But the other thing to keep in mind, I know we always talk about residential, but we've also got commercial.
I see a lot of the cultured stone is, is a nail on.
I know, I'm talking about fifteen years ago, we had some townhouse projects that did the nail on the stone and it does more license than it does. But also we always keep in mind that we've also got commercial projects. I mean, there's one I'll mention that I'm sure we're all aware of, there, there was a commercial recreational building that was supposed to have masonry on it and we didn't get masonry. We got a metal building, bring the metal building to town. I mean, I'm not happy about it, voted against it at the time, and we still don't have masonry on that building, so. You know, the, the problem is when a developer says they're going to do something and when they don't do it, you know, if the building doesn't seem to be recourse, go back against them. I mean, that, you know, that, that's why we probably have to, you know, make the building stronger again because they, they can find a way out, but they will. And it's much harder to go back after the fact.
Yeah, it's important we set a high standard. If it levels the playing field for everybody, wind up with a, a good quality product. You start making exceptions, you end up degrading everything and it's not in our personal interest. But you're great on a point which we brought up before. You're right, we don't necessarily follow through. I can only think of two occasions, at least I'm sure, the same developer, where we went after him because he didn't deliver what we said and we didn't allow him to occupy it until he gave us what we wanted. We probably need a little bit more checking. We have no check on the single family residential's, which is something which we talk about periodically. It'd be nice, can't, can't do everything, but it's, it's, it's nice if we had some sort of practice to make sure that we get what people say they're going to give us, so.
Well, thanks for that discussion. The last site plan review question has to do with how we regulate the drive-through window operations. And again, keeping in mind, this typically would require a special use approval, that the findings that act for a special use approval are essentially that the drive-through window operation would be detrimental to the adjacent properties. So it was kind of right out of the box, the board has a great latitude in determining whether or not that drive-through operation would, would have a negative impact. The suggestion was made of identifying a minimum buffer or minimum separation, whether it's two hundred feet or a hundred fifty feet. I think that's a good idea because we've seen in practice what, what's working and we can measure the distances. However, I think each situation is going to be, you know, a little bit unique and similar to maybe some of the discussion earlier this evening, instead of having a hard and fast rule, staff is presenting this as something we could identify as a, a guideline as, as opposed to a hard and fast requirement. We could say, you know, we advise or typically we would like to see the drive-through window operation, a minimum of a hundred fifty feet away or a minimum of two hundred feet away. But again, ultimately it would be.
How are we coming up with this number?
Uh, in identifying the recommendation, I think staff looked at some existing drive-through operations that have been in, in place for a number of years without apparent complaint and made those measurements. So could it be smaller? Perhaps it could be a hundred feet, but we.
I mean, when I'm sitting in a, in a drive-through, I can't hear the speaker talking to the car in front of me. And then I go to the bank, I can't hear what the, what they're talking to the car, well, the voice of the teller talking to the car next to me.
Yeah, I think context is very important as well as time of day. So what's, uh, what's loud or, or what's not loud at five? It's, it's interesting as a, just as a.
Well, I don't want to start an argument over distance, I, but I'm, I, I'm just wondering where this number just come out of the sky or do you have some empirical, uh, measurements or, or something?
So one, one of the benchmarks was the Burger King that's at, at the Kohl's or Plainfield Retail Marketplace, Hundred Nineteenth Street, Route fifty nine. That Burger King is the northernmost commercial lot in the center and there's residential adjacent, so that measurement is like a hundred fifty feet to the, to the nearest.
Well, just because you get no complaints at a hundred fifty feet doesn't mean that seventy five feet won't work also.
Sure.
Well, seventy five feet is a coffee shop.
Yeah, there have been a lot, well, there's, I don't buy a bill, so there have been complaints because they, the, the Walgreens and one, you know, one of the things is that everybody thinks it's the box, you can turn that down, but it's the people talking to it. You, you pay attention to this next time you're around, you'll see people will shout at that box that's right here like they have to yell across Plainfield to get a cup of coffee. It's just funny because it's funny when you see, it's more the person pulling up yelling their order in than it is almost like coming from the store back to the vehicle. But, um, no, they, there's been, we, we had complaints, not complaints, but concerns brought up from the Walgreens right there, you know, from those houses right across the street or something like that. So I, I think it's really a case by case basis. I think it depends on how it's all structured and how much of it is, I don't want that in my backyard versus is this really the noise? And that's, that's part of what we've often found with judging the last time, a couple times, so.
Interesting, Gutiérrez, you have some very good points. And one of the contentious, uh, drive-throughs was, I believe Starbucks, there's a fence there. Have we had any complaints from that drive-through?
They did. They would agree.
Wasn't there already a fence in place or bushes or trees or some sort of buffer?
The houses were sale now with commercial zoning passive.
So I guess.
Yeah, that's been.
It's French. What I'm going with it is sometimes people make noise before we approve something and then once it's there, well, it's not all that badly, completely forgot that we've approved it and that's there and it's causing a prob, and it's not necessarily causing a problem. So I guess I'm in favor of leaving things as is. I, I don't necessarily see it.
McDonald's and Hundred Thirty Fifth Street, we had the same thing. Let's build a fence, let's build a berm, let's build trees, let's do everything. And I don't know if we've gotten any complaints from it. They didn't want to put in that Taco Bell will next door to it. to it, and that's just like the Walgreens you were counting. I don't know which ones you were talking about, but I've never heard a complaint about the one on Oak.
Well, that's what I'm talking, I, I don't wanna say it's a complaint. They, it wasn't presented that way. It was just a statement that we could hear that, that interchange with the law. I mean, it was, wasn't presented like, oh, this is horrible, you shouldn't have done, it wasn't, wasn't said like that. But it's, it's just the, it just depends on the logistics, where the houses are versus where the drive-through is. I, I think it's always gonna be a case by case basis, and you always have to bring in the NIMBY factor. You know, I don't want the Taco Bell with the McDonald's, cause my subdivision's right there, I don't want that near me. It wasn't there when I moved in, you know. You know, but yet you're on a major road like Route thirty, or Hundred Thirty-Fifth Street, or one of the main, main streets, you have to have the expectation that it's going to be commercial businesses that are going to be there. Those are major roads, I don't know. But I think it's a case by case basis.
I think, part of the issue, I think, goes back to, you know, with the drive-throughs, a lot of times it's the hours, and you've done it, and we've said, so whether it's twenty-four hours or whether it's early morning, late night, I think that's where the issue comes in. And I think what we need to look at maybe even more than the distance is really probably more the location of the order and then the pickup window. So in other words, if you can put it, if you have residential on the east side, maybe you can have everything on the west side of the building. So now you got the retail restaurant blocking everything from the residential. And then it could be a hundred feet might be far enough away.
A lot of those, a lot of those big builders, McDonald's, Taco Bell, I mean, it's a set stage when they come in, the plans, this is what we do, this is exactly how we put it up. Every one is the same.
But you can reverse it typically.
Well, maybe, I, well, I don't know. That'd be a tough call because, uh, the way they come in and.
You can't, you can't, it is possible. That's what I'm saying. Sometimes it might not be what they necessarily want, but if that's how it fits the site the best, to keep it away from the residential, maybe that's the direction we give them or find another site. So I'd like to stack some information. I might look, I'd like to see us have a few facts that work. You're absolutely right, people come in upfront, anticipate something, that is a key factor, that you say that this is what's gonna happen. Uh, we have a number of cases in town, let's actually measure what it is. I mean, we measure traffic, uh, we measure speed, that we can do that twenty-four hours. But let's see, uh, the one thing on the Walgreens, uh, or the door number that said it went next to Walgreens, people were concerned about the lights shine at their house. It's not strictly noise, there may be other things. But at least on the noise thing, maybe we can put this to bed by saying, we have measured it, these are the things we have in place, and, you know, this is what it is. Nobody's heard of it. I haven't heard any complaints, but then I'm not sure, I'm in the middle of a complaint group anyway. But, uh, this is probably just as well, I'm not complaining. But on the other hand, you know.
We know who to give all the fault to.
That's what things are for, right? Uh, but anyway, I think if we could get some, yeah, you know, Starbucks was contentious, uh, the Walgreens, the McDonald's over on Hundred, on Thirty, you know, let's, let's document what it is. And we had the noisy nightclub, if you will. People were two hundred feet away, and there was a lot of noise, and they achieved a number of those, and that, that exceeded the correct limit. But I can't believe we're exceeding fifty-six decibels or whatever from a, a speaker phone. Margie may be right, people yelling at them, but they're yelling at the building, hopefully it won't get to the neighbors. But if we could just get some hard data that says, not absolute, but at least it gives us a solid indication of what the real world is like. I don't really know.
I agree with Jim, a lot of that too, though. You know, if you have, like McDonald's changed to two stations to order, you can't hear the other, you know, and that's fifteen feet away.
Good, well, I think we're hearing consensus here as well. So, um, the last, uh, I don't know.
The consensus was to make sure, I said, the consensus is not to specify a footage.
Correct, correct.
Well, I think the consensus, I, I heard was that should be done more on a case by case basis.
Yeah, I think if.
To take in all, all the, all the factors. And, and just, it may be appropriate to apply this in, in some cases.
I think what we decided, planning commissioners, no matter where you draw the line, if you say a hundred feet, a hundred and fifty feet, or two hundred feet, the first thing a developer's gonna do is wanna negotiate something different, you know, whatever we say. So, like you said, then you write that into a case by case basis and.
Okay. Great. And then the, the last topic, and this is partly why I think it's so beneficial to have, uh, to have the group here together for the informal discussion, is, um, a proposal or, or the concept that, hey, there might be a handful of uses in the zoning code that we'll be better off regulating as special uses, whether it be because of concern there might be an over-concentration, uh, or there's a potential for some negative impacts. We don't want, uh, particular use near a sensitive, uh, location like a school or, you know, things of that nature. So, um, there was a proposal, uh, that's got to a plan commission and, uh, would, would be advancing to the village board, uh, independently, but we'll, we'll kind of speed everything up together here. Uh, just as, uh, kind of background again, uh, I know the board, the plan commission is aware of this, but if, uh, use is identified as a special use in the zoning code, the presumption is that use is appropriate, it's okay in that zoning district provided there isn't gonna be a negative impact, uh, to the neighbors or, you know, for the shopping center. Uh, if that use might generate too much parking, uh, parking isn't available at that site, or, you know, the access location can't handle, uh, the inn and outs that would be generated by a high turnover use, whatever the case may be. So the list that's, uh, here at the board is, uh, variety of uses that, uh, we're suggested to at least look at, say, hey, these are currently allowed by right. Uh, there's an opportunity, if we want it, as, as the village to decide to regulate these as special uses, uh, we can. When the plan commission, uh, reviewed this, they identified, uh, that the flea market use potentially would be something that the plan commission would support as a special use, but for the most part, uh, the recommendation was, um, to leave things as is. And, um, I don't wanna speak for Chairman Sopkoviac, but, uh, I think Commissioner Renzi put it very well. The plan commission's feels its role is to, uh, implement the policies of the village board and the comprehensive plan. And, uh, so, uh, we're here to, to make sure that we understand that the board's priorities and, um, you know, if, if there's a desire to change some of these uses, we certainly have the opportunity to do that. Uh, but at this time, I think, um, you know, staff in the plan commission felt, for the most part, the majority of those uses would be, um, appropriate by right and or, you know, they wouldn't be distinguishable from other uses that are already permitted. Uh, so there'd be a little bit of a slippery slope or a difficulty, uh, from a zoning standpoint and singling out some uses, making them special uses and then having similar compatible uses be allowed. Uh, so, that's a long-winded introduction or way of coming full circle to ask the board.
Put this slide back up, please.
Oh, sure. So, wasn't a hundred percent sure, well, where this, uh, proposal came from, and at least at the plan commission, we weren't sure how strongly the board felt, uh, on some of these uses or all of these uses, or if it was just a, a simple manner of raising the question. Uh, you know, we're here, we can, we can raise the question and, um, just determine if any changes are needed.
Well, I'll speak to one part of the board. Uh, I like the idea of putting more of them in there because I think it forces a review at the board level of things that are coming to the town. Otherwise, they, if you accept them as a matter of fact, they come in, they may change the town atmosphere, dynamics, and we have no indications gonna happen till it's a done deal. I'd rather have it discussed, uh, there's some places where we have some authority to, uh, you know, approve or not approve, and some places where they don't have any authority. They're gonna come in whether we like it or not. And I think we need to, but surfacing in front of the, um, kind of public meeting type thing, I think, is productive. That's why I was for it, including these as special, uh, uses. Uh, doesn't mean you're not gonna approve them, but at least you know where they're gonna go, and you make sure that you, again, look at the neighborhood or the, the joining, adjoining stores and so on, to make sure, uh, that, you know, that we're serving everybody's interests. I think it's our job to look up the village as a whole, so.
One piece of it that I had in this was the fortune telling. I think it's imperative we, um, examine our definition section of the ordinance and look up every synonym for fortune telling, whether it's tarot card reading, palm reading, toad reading, whatever. And, and that's the definition section, so that way somebody can't manipulate and say, I'm not fortune telling, I'm doing intuitive consulting, and it's one applicant.
Yeah, I read in tea leaves.
Yeah, and, and.
That was, that was a planning commission thing, remember that year as well?
I remember, yeah.
It was two consulting with meat therapy or some sort of magic crystals or something. So, um, so if there's any, we can make sure we clamp down on the definition section as to what fortune telling is, so we, we don't have an applicant to try to play semantics so as we can say, no, sir, we manage the definition section, and crystal therapy is considered X, Y, Z.
I, uh, have to agree with, with both Trusty Lamp and Trusty Peck says. I think, uh, we wanna have a little bit of, uh, foreknowledge of what's wanting to come into the town, make sure it doesn't take away from other property owners' enjoyment of what they already have. Uh, so I'd agree wholeheartedly with Trusty Lamp, and, uh, I think that we should, you know, approve the whole list here. And also like what Trusty Peck is saying, I think we have to, if we have a list and add more terms, we have to make sure we get the source out and make sure we have all of the possible, uh, different ways of stating each of those uses.
How come you got beauty, nail, tanning salon, but not barber shops?
No one.
Barber shop.
Oh.
I think that would fall under.
I, I'm curious about that whole topic. I mean, I can see some of the things up there, and I'm in total agreement, especially with the fortune telling and the flea market. But where, why does a beauty salon qualify for that? I'm just, just curious. I just, how did it make the list?
Well, when we, uh, the list came to the village board in the July Committee of the Whole, and that was one of those that was added on at the, at, at.
I'm just curious why. I mean, it just doesn't seem like.
Don't remember why it ended up there, but, uh, yeah.
I mean, we have a lot of them, but why would you, to me, that's, that kind of, where do you draw the line with free enterprise or something like that?
Well, somebody could run, uh, actually run a one-shore beauty shop by their house.
I think that, I think that would be a legal, that, that would be a legal use.
We've had those for years, though. It's just like.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I, I mean, that would be, if that's a legitimate business that goes through regulations, however it has to go through. I just don't know why, just saying that beauty salon or nail salon, tanning salon would be a special use. I, it just doesn't seem, it doesn't seem to fit with.
I, I'm the same way with currency exchange, what.
Yeah, that one I'm not.
Some, very similar to a bank.
Yeah, I just, I, it, it's just an interesting list. I don't see, I'm, and that's your point about the barber shop. Why would they make a list? I mean, you kind of said the same thing, I don't know. It, that, that one just, to me, sticks out the most to me, I.
I would easily swap currency exchange for pawn shop if we were gonna look at currency exchange for gold.
Yeah.
I think we've already restricted the cash for gold, from obviously.
We have.
Right, we voted, I believe, that is at the board level, so it, I don't.
Love and payday loan.
Yeah.
That's, that's.
Or title company.
Yeah, tho- those are, those are things that, uh, in, in, in itself, it's not a bad business, but it kind of drags the community down. It, it's a poor image to the community.
I think it's important, if you, if you bring it to the village board, it also allows for a public discussion. You can have residents come in and say, I oppose this because, or I'm for this because. I think that's, it's, it's important to include the residents of the village along with us in deciding how the town's going to be planned.
I know our legal counsel isn't here, but if, I guess, I guess from a legal standpoint, we're, well, you know, John, you're right, dude.
Well, I, I just can say.
And where's this legal?
Well, it's what, what Jonathan said, that by definition, a special use means it's approved and then we will get it for traffic and parking. And those are all lawful businesses. So, we can't, it's not like a house of prostitution. Okay, well, then, do you need to have a special use to have?
I can tell you, I can tell you where the, I, I asked, I believe I started this discussion and asked for additional items to be included. And part of it, I think, came up because we started a special use for a house of worship. And I thought when you start reading the, the zoning code, it looks a little funny that you say, okay, if I wanna open a house of worship, I gotta go and get special permission through a, through a special use, but if I wanna open a tobacco shop, I don't. And I think it's just, you know, some of our residents want input on what's going on in our community. And I think by allowing a special use for these types of uses, it just adds.
Well, a house of worship is certainly a special use, though.
It doesn't preclude these businesses, it just adds a level of review.
But, I mean, like the chairman said, though, I mean, it's a big difference with the house of worship, because you have ingress and egress issues, you have then also to have a site, on-site traffic control, what kind of traffic control you had in your streets, then do you have after parking, what are the parking needs, is it sufficient with the neighborhood, or are they in an industrial area where they don't have industrial people coming? So there's a lot of the questions, whereas, you know, you go get a massage, you go buy a shirt. Is it basically about the same amount of time, you're gonna park, go and go back? So it really doesn't affect the parking and the ingress and egress, it's just simply whether or not you think a massage par, or a massage parlor should go into town. And.
Okay, well, that's what we do, we set ordinances.
I, I understand that, but it's also, that's why there's libertarians involved too. And you come to an area that, you know, I don't have any tattoos, tattoos are legal, so body art services, you know, I guess they would probably take longer than buying a shirt.
But we're not, we're not precluding these uses.
Well, then, we don't need a special use either, because they're not impacting anybody, really. I, I, I can see, that's, that's a problem, that I, I, I don't see where there's any impact. If you allow that to go next, I suppose, what, you know, I mean, what are we gonna have? We're gonna have, um, a beauty salon next door to a body art, next to a liquor store, next to a daycare center?
What's, what's wrong with having to review to determine that there's not gonna be impact?
Well, the other thing that I would have a question of is how many people are going to be at a massage parlor at one time? How many people can be at a beauty salon at one? I mean, how many chairs? Two or three chairs? The same thing with body art, you're only gonna have two or three people in there. The same thing with the currency exchange. The only one that I can really see of, of any interest would be the flea market, because that'd be an open air type.
And there's all the.
Help me understand this. So if everybody likes these uses and doesn't.
I never said like them, I just said, there's not very many people at the use.
Right, but so, if, if you wanna open a body art services, you can't do it downtown. But you can do it and it'll be free, I believe, correct? And that's okay. So there's some areas we're already saying, we don't want these uses in this area, but it's okay in other areas. And then some people are asking me, it's like, well, you know, why come we can't have any input on what goes in our, in our neighborhoods?
I would like to further what Ed's saying. I think that, like, for example, we say, oh, well, we don't have a problem with tobacco store. Well, what if your kids are going to school, and every day they're seeing, hey, tobacco's great, go smoke. I think that's got a good point. We want, and Brian, uh, has one as well, we want community input. We shouldn't just be a group of people who are telling the town what to do. We should be having a public meeting, as Brian suggests, uh, Trusty Wojowski, so that, um, we can get the input of everyone who lives here and works here. And maybe they might have a problem with it. Well, uh, I think that what Trusty Wojowski and Trusty O'Rourke, together, their ideas are, uh, very good. Uh, we need to have more review and more public review, more public comment. And I think that what they propose, I think, uh, is just giving the public, uh, more opportunities for input.
Right, at least give them the opportunity to come in and speak their piece.
But I, I can, if you don't mind, I'm here to actually jump on with Commissioner Renzi here for just a moment. You're, you're giving them a chance to vent, but you're, at the end of the day, you're going to find yourself having to vote for some of these things anyhow because they don't pass that litmus test. So essentially, you're inviting residents in, that, like, drive-through windows, for example, coming to you saying, hey, I don't want to see that two parlor next to me, but there's no, there's no litmus test for you to say no, they have to vote for it. And now you have a bunch of folks screaming at you out in the lobby here, saying, you no good sons of guns, why did I even waste my time tonight?
Isn't that democracy?
Yeah.
Well, I don't know if it is, I think it's setting yourself up for failure.
But, but, I mean.
Yeah, if you can influence, uh, so, people may say, I'd like to put a business there, and they may say, here, I don't wanna put it there after you get the feedback. If a business is gonna succeed, why would they wanna do that? And how are they gonna know?
They just wanna support John, he's out there all on his own.
He handled himself very nicely. But no, I think, uh, yeah, you're right, people can get upset. But on the other hand, I think the people who are thinking about putting it in there, uh, are getting some firsthand information as to whether it's a really good idea. Maybe other places that might make more sense, and we can suggest that. If we have to approve it, uh, yeah, we can. And some things we cannot turn down, if you will. But I think it gives an option for that, that people who are trying to go in there, to understand, does it make sense? And so say, well, that's great, we, we got a good example on, on Fraser Road. You know, they wanna put, uh, the auto service place, Blue Door. You know, they want to put the auto service place, Blue Door.
Fifty-nine dollar.
Yeah, and it's just, you know, we're saying, there are other places that could be better. It allows us to have that discussion. And I think that part is, is productive. So.
I think there was some concerns also after the initial review about the legality, about being able to do it. And I'd like to tell you, I just looked at two of our neighboring towns and they seem to do it already. One of them in the B, B one, the daycare is a special use. The B two, a cigar, tobacco is a special use. Daycare again is a special use. And the B two, B three, cigars, tobacco, daycare, liquor. And then some of them go forward and limits special, you know, maybe into a manufacturing district. So if you want to open up an adult use, a body piercing or a tattoo, it's gotta be an M one, an industrial use. That's one community. Another community, B one, liquor is okay, but a health massage is okay. Drinking establishments is a conditional use. Photography studios is a conditional use. B two, drinking is okay. Tobacco is okay. Daycare is a conditional use. Medical cannabis is a conditional use. B three, tattoos, conditional use, piercings. So I, I think other communities have already done this, so I don't know that the legality piece of it is, is high of concern or reality maybe as initially thought is what my opinion is.
I'm one of, I was one of the few that plan commissioners we talked about this, the plan commission agreement. I may be one of the only two that I think were in favor of the idea of it being a special use. I mean, I like doing since, you know, running a shirt from, you know, I work for the city of Aurora. I mean, I'm in the building department, but zoning a lot. I mean, the, the thing about that list is there's a lot of those uses that you have to realize, you know, are either regulated by the state in some fashion. And I mean, what we found there, I mean, this isn't always just a zoning process. It's also a building apartment process or an occupancy process. But, you know, when someone comes in and says, okay, we want to put in a massage parlor, and they show you set of plans and they want to put in ten massage parlors, but they only have one state licensed massage therapist, you've got a problem. And, and that's the kind of level of detail that you need a process to, to discover. I mean, and, and I don't care whether it's a massage parlor. I mean, it'd be the same as a beauty salon. You put a beauty salon in with ten chairs, you've only got two licensed, you know, you've got a problem when you've got ten chairs and you've only got two licensed people. And so, you know, it's fair to say free enterprise, but, I mean, a, a very common thing, I'll tell you, in the Illinois plumbing code, you have more than five employees working at any given time. In any business, you need two rest rooms. And I guarantee you, that's one of the most commonly violated things in the state plumbing code. Because, you know, and, and we deal with it all the time in the city of Aurora. I mean, we deal with it in retail stores, Fox Valley Mall. We ask the major retailers to write a letter. We only have five employees working at any given time. Holiday season, we know they're gonna hire interns. We know they're gonna hire them. I mean, I, I mean, the, the smoking thing, that's, that's another big one because, again, smoking law, it's a state law. That's regulated. I know we had the place of five menards that had the smoking lounge. And I think the way that regulation reads is, the reason they were okay where they were there in that building because it was a standalone building. And that's what it has to be. And then that business, I know they moved into another strip center, kept it retail, but then they ended up coming up to Aurora and they went into Old Wendy's so they could have the smoking lounge because, again, because it was a standalone building. But, you know, there's a lot of state regulations that affect a lot of these businesses. Uh, and.
Oh, the beauty, beauty and, uh, beauty, beauty salons and barber shops.
Yeah, absolutely. All massage therapists are all licensed professionals.
Yeah.
And, you know, I, that's why I saw the value in having a, 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 whether with, you know, it's just a special use or whatever it is. But in the other example I'll give you, I think recently, some of you probably read about what happened in York though. You have a tattoo parlor out there that they, I think everybody thought they were doing it correctly. They approved the guy's use in the downtown area. He spent twenty, thirty thousand dollars rebuilding a downtown building. They give him a CO. He actually opened for business. A few days later, they suddenly realized, well, we've got someone who orders, there's a distance to residential. And they, and they actually forced him to shut down. And believe me, there's nothing worse than, you know, they have me as fairly do something like that in the, you know, in the press and everything else. It's just, and that's why it's good to have a process in place. So I think that's the value in having it, that as a special use. And I'm not saying, you know, this list is perfectly correct, but to just say, oh, everybody should be able to open by riot wherever this only is, and there's no oversight, that's not so good.
Oh, no, I'm not saying that at all. Believe me. I mean, there's a few things up there that I absolutely.
Right, right.
Do not want.
Right.
I just don't see where the, the beauty shops fall into that. I just think it's kind of a, like a, it's kind of a weird thing in that group.
No. Well, exactly. But if somebody builds a brand new beauty shop and they put ten chairs in and you find out through their occupancy process, they only have two licensed additions, you've got a problem.
Well, and that's true, but lots of times what they also do too, and I, and I know this for a fact, that, one that I frequent, they may only have one or two, they may have, they're like four chairs, so these other people are part-time. They come and go at different times.
Well, right, right. But you're never gonna find that out unless you have a process where you can actually get to that level of detail. That's my point.
So I have two questions. Sounds like we have a list that generally the answer is yes, with the exception of two things. Uh, one is, uh, beauty, nail, tanning salon and massage therapy. Should they stay on? Should they come off? And then as well, another one that was mentioned was daycare. Should we put that on the list or should we not put that on the list?
I think daycare should probably stay on the list because, uh, there's gonna be traffic going to and from. There's gonna be children going to and from and playing in recreational activities. I know they're reg, they are regulated by the state, but nevertheless, uh, it might not be, um, really acceptable for someone to start a, a six pupil daycare in the middle of a residential neighborhood. There, maybe, maybe there should be a limit on it, on how many, how many children they can watch.
Well, there is a limit. If you're in a residential, the residential code basically says if you have more than five kids that aren't your own, then you have to build one at each year, so.
Okay. But I, I think, um, I think perhaps it would still be worthwhile to have, uh.
Yep.
That, that in there because when, once you force that public hearing, that, that allows the, uh, especially the fire department to, uh, be aware of the existence of that, uh, activity. Because I'm, I'm sure, uh, their, their needs in the, uh, in, for public safety, it, it's probably a lot higher than if it was just a plain residence.
So the, so the, yes?
I'm already gonna take enough beauty salons with the barbers, but nail, tanning and massage, I think should stay.
I would agree.
Uh, the massage does concern me when you have, now I've driven through different communities that have twenty-four hour Asian massage parlors. How do we have to keep this out of something like that?
Well, there's a massage therapy and a massage parlor.
Yeah.
And I don't think the two are the same.
Right. Well, I want to make sure that we're defining that.
Massage, massage therapy often is consistent with, um, medical recuperation for, uh, it's similar to, uh, physical therapy.
Correct. So I guess essentially, what kind of teeth we have to prevent something that would be detrimental to the community is, I mentioned.
I don't know how you're gonna separate though.
Yeah, that, that's.
I'm just, my, my only point is that massage parlors are one thing and massage therapy is something else.
And Brian, what have you seen in other communities?
I have not seen anything about.
It's a profession.
Well, if somebody just lumped them together, they can come forward and explain, we're like chiropractors, or, uh, maybe we shouldn't be in town.
Actually, if it's.
And have a massage therapy at airports.
Pock it out.
You know, you can sit down in a chair and it'll rub your neck and whatever.
Well, the interesting thing actually is where we, where I saw it in another community was, there was a complete prohibition to it, but you started getting these massage envy type franchise operations which, uh, or, you know, the nail and hair salon that also has, uh, massage therapists.
Yeah, spa.
So we found that we have to actually rewrite it to allow for those types of uses. Actually, it wasn't a special use.
So I guess I'm looking to see what kind of solution do we have to the proposed?
It sounds like we'll make a special, we'll, we'll take out the hair salon section of it, but if it's nails or, uh, tanning salon and massage, it's a special.
Well, there are places that are simply nails, nails and pedicures and, and stuff like that. And they, they don't do hairstyling and, uh.
No, exactly. Yeah. So if you're just a nail place or you're just a tanning place or you're massage.
I, I think that, I think that would be a process.
Even if you aren't providing those services, that hedge your beauty salon.
And probably, are we gonna add pawn shop or swap that for currency exchange or where were we at with that?
Well, we may agree on the currency exchange, they have the pawn shop anyway.
Yeah. We'll make sure that gets.
How, how about the, uh, the quick and long, uh, permissions? Does anybody have a feeling about those?
Cash for title and that kind of thing.
Yeah, payday loan, cash for title and.
Well, I'm kind of hoping that all under that whole currency exchange, that there's a, yeah, secondary financial markets.
And I guess you're, just, your definition's that.
Yeah, so some, um, you know, uses, the, the, our use list obviously doesn't list every use, especially as, you know, like the cash for gold really came online, you know. Anyway, as things evolve, uh, and typically when something's not listed, uh, you know, planning department will bring it to the village board for interpretation just to make sure. So we would identify that, that yours listed use, which in this case would be like a currency exchange.
I grew up in a blue collar neighborhood and the currency exchange was part of the, part of the village. A lot of people didn't have, uh, bank accounts. And I was a teenager. That's where I cashed my check. That's where I got my, my, uh, uh, registration renewed on my car. Uh, that's where I bought money orders to make payments on my car. I mean, uh, it wasn't, granted, it's not a bank, but I, 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 I don't, I can't, I, I can't fathom why, why you would want to have a special use for currency exchange. I'm not gonna argue with. I mean, if that, if that's the consensus, well, then so be it.
Okay. Well, that's, that's all I had prepared and I think I got great direction. And, you know, fully comfortable and confident that when this comes forward, we'll hopefully address all the, what we perceive.
Thank you, Matt.
And I want to thank Mike for inviting us and the village board for inviting us. I, I think this was a very fruitful discussion. I think we're, we're more on the same page now. Try to get us even more on the same page. Can I bring up another topic, which is, I love to get you into a push. Uh, since we have all the major players here, we have a plant commission and the village board. One of the reasons I tend the village, I tend the plant commission because I do enjoy, I've learned a lot. But also, I'm, I'm the link between the plant commission and the village board. And I'm not sure that, uh, that's the best way to do it. We're about to make some changes anyway. And I guess I'd like to ask the plant commissions, how would you like your activities to be communicated to the village board? Because right now, it's, uh, probably minimal, let's put it that way. And I think you got some good opinions. I'd like to see those opinions expressed because we're regular policymakers. But it helps if we know that you all have recommendations of what sort of, yeah, that maybe it goes against the copy of the plan. Say, yeah, yeah, consider that. I'd like to see those things surfaced, other than by my physically personally being there. I don't know what you guys think. Are you, you feel like you're well represented when you get to the village board?
I think so. I, I don't, I don't, I, I don't have any, any issues. Yeah, I think, uh, you guys are doing a great job of taking our input and, uh, running with it. So I would say it's going well.
Yeah, we, we understand that there are gonna be times when you don't agree and that's, that's how it is. But the majority of, the overwhelming majority of times, uh, our recommendations are taken in, in whole or in part. So, uh, I think we're all pretty comfortable with that.
Well, I, I guess I, since you've been there.
You've been there, so.
Yeah, right. That's true.
Um, we approve normally our minutes the next week. Now, it's possible that you'll meet in between. So do you give the draft in the minutes then as part of the recommendation we?
I've almost never seen minutes. That's a point I'm trying to make.
Okay.
You have a lot of very good discussion. You have some points. Minutes are doing a great job of recording what happens during meetings. That doesn't get, at least it hasn't gotten to me on the village board, let's put it that way. Uh, do we need all that or not? That's why I like to kind of discuss it, but there may be some highlights that ought to be condensed. And one of the things that brings it up is that, uh, a hundred fifty feet, uh, two hundred feet setback on the, uh, drive-throughs. Uh, I asked a question and said, oh, well, my commission recommends a hundred fifty, but I'm recommending two hundred. Well, if I hadn't asked the question, I would've known what you thought. And I haven't missed that particular meeting, so I couldn't talk first. Yeah, that's the point I'm trying to say. I just like. Well, a lot of our connection with the village board is through staff.
Yeah, through staff.
Well, but that, maybe some things, some things in staff too. I'd like to kind of say, well, this is the staff's role in communicating between the two. It ought to not be my role, if you will, to be the major, like, make sure things are covered. Because there's things you raised that I, at the board meetings, I would say, what about this? Was that taken care of? And the answer is, yeah, that's good. I'd like to know that that was taken care of. I can ask questions, but I know the issues that were raised by you all. And I, within a two-week period, a lot of those things get cleaned up. I just want to make sure they're cleaned up. And I have. Back in the old days, they took the village board members and they made each one in charge of stuff.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Go recommend it.
And, and, and at some point, the, uh, there, there was, uh, there was some conflicts. And so that, hence the committee of the hall. And, uh, the, we had sort of a sponsor on the, on the trustees and, and this is going back twenty-seven, twenty-five years. This per, this trustee usually said in, uh, meetings, and, uh, if there was any question when the issue came to the village board, he, he could, uh, clarify it. But, which is what, was, which is a lot of what you're doing.
Well, but I, I'd like to know. So if I can, just in, maybe in closing, uh, identify, we'll certainly, as a kind of a recommended practice, include, typically it would include draft minutes if the plant commission hasn't meant to approve them. If the case is controversial, if I, if I feel that, you know, the, there was public comment, extensive public comment. We try and summarize in our staff reports whether there was public comment. And certainly if there was a dissenting vote, I think most votes from the plant commissioner are unanimous, but if there's a dissenting vote where the issue was articulated by the commissioner, I'll at least try and identify, you know, this commissioner was concerned that it was too close to their homes or whatever the case may be. So we'll, we'll try and include the salient information, but if we can do that a little bit.
Do the salient things. It, it condenses, so we don't need eight pages of minutes.
Sure.
Because it's tough to read that. They're all succinct questions. That's the kind, I like the meetings that you have. But if you.
Most of, most of our, though, it's only been about three pages of minutes, so. And we're talking about, well, we're not talking a lot, though.
Yeah, we, my, the other thing I get when I attend the meetings, I get the package from the previous one, so I see the actual minutes. They don't come to me as trustee. I, I look toward them kind enough to make a package for me every time, so I get the same thing you get. But anyway, it's, it's not a discussion as long as everybody's here. That gives you some guidance as to what I think, yeah, judgment to them. But try to further communication between the two groups to, I think it's important that we stay on the same page. And I think generally we have, we have an overview, uh, very much. We do listen to your inputs and that's very important, so.
I guess I would just ask, whenever you want consideration on, and you said you put the minutes together if it's contentious. Maybe if you, if you guys understand or think that there's gonna be a lot of public input or a lot of comments, maybe if you could just notify the board and says, hey, this case is coming up, you know, this Tuesday. You know, if you're interested in attending type things.
Good idea. Just to give you a picture.
Not big ones, no, but at least if you have an idea, it might be, because then we can come to listen to the, to the concerns and the discussion ourselves if we're interested or watch it on, on the video as well. Yeah.
Great question. And to, thinking back on what, you know, trustee over, except there's a new law that just went into effect too about, uh, people by email can get notified of any and all meetings. And all they have to do is submit their name and request. So I don't know how that fits in, but we need to have some mechanism for doing that in terms of anybody that's requesting or something. Because as a citizen, I can say, okay, I want to get, although I do get, no, it's a mouthful. For the historical commission or for the village or for the planning commission, put me on that mailing list. And then I just wait six months and see if I'm still on there. And if not, I can sue you. And, you know, that's, that's what the law now says that you can do. So I, I think we should have some way of making sure that maybe in our water bills, we can put a blurb out that's, uh, you know, if you want to, because once it's inputted, it's pretty much inputted in emails, email class. But I'm thinking, you know, commissioner wants to be, and, you know, allow these trustee, get the meetings, well.
But we already, we already have a village newsletter, uh, that Amy Delroy puts out. I don't know if it could be an addendum to that or.
I don't know if it could be an addendum to that, or.
That's, that's what I'm thinking, as to notifying people some, in some way, so.
So water bill goes to the owner, the owner of record, doesn't necessarily go to the resident.
That's true.
So.
Depends on their leisure.
Maybe talk, we can chat with IT, or you can, you can chat with IT and see if there's simply a way to sign up on our website, have a portal where they can put their email address in, and then it's automatically.
Well, it'd be similar to what the, the list that Amy DeBonnie has for the, for the village newsletter. Yeah.
Yeah, well, I think we could explore some different options. We already do have a series of folks that do ask for you to send out the package.
They said, dude, they just sent me email.
And you put it on, and it goes to them.
And if they ask for these demos, I send it to their neighbor, and he's hoping they can be the other demos that they have.
Yeah.
All right, thank you all very much for.
Can I throw up? Or, uh, we, uh, one more thing, and I know this is, I'm not going to specifics, but we got a case, something this led to here. And I know that, I think, pretty much, I think you guys would agree, the plant commission, we all felt pretty strongly that, that there was variance being requested, it was a outbuilding, a garage type structure, we call it.
Oh, yeah.
And if I'm not mistaken, the only actual variance was the setback of the driveway to this.
Yeah.
And I think we all agreed that, I mean, that's, and I would add, obviously, it's a topic for a future meeting, but we really feel like there was some structural problems somehow, recycling review, or, you know, either A, not limiting outbuildings at all, or lot coverage. You know, how these people were able to come in, if I'm not mistaken, I know they came to go to board, and I believe they.
No, they didn't come to the board, they changed their plans so that they didn't need variance.
They changed their plans, but I, we, we never got to see what they changed their plan to, is my point.
Eliminated.
What's that?
They eliminated the variance.
They did, got, got five feet off the driveway, how was the issue?
I, I think, you know, at, at plant commission, we felt strong enough that we, you know, we were just denial, you know, there's no reason you should even be building it.
They changed, they didn't have to request the, or approval, they changed it.
Yeah, well, I know that, but that's what I'm saying, even with not needing a variance, I still think it was a problem under, you know, the cycling review standpoint, a lot of coverage, and everything else.
We don't have that coverage, though, that's.
What's that?
That's, we have to go back.
Oh, no, I agree, this is the topic for, you know.
It says we should seriously consider that, but at that time we didn't have a choice.
Sure.
No, I know that, but what I'm saying is, it was one that kind of came out of left field, and it kind of caught everybody's surprise, that somebody could come in and, and propose something like that. Yeah, like you said, if they shifted the driveway back and now it wasn't a variance, they were able to do it.
Well, they did it.
I don't think anybody was really that happy, that's my point, at least we were, I think.
They submitted it to driveway, it was the right location, it had more than enough setbacks, way under lot coverage.
Right. Right, I don't think they had a lot of happy neighbors, though, I mean, they had a lot of opposition, our plant commission.
They didn't have happy neighbors, they took pictures of us all out there, because the mayor and I went out, and we went out there with Ken, and.
Yeah. Right. I.
Middle of Boston, yeah. Neighbors came right out.
Before we even got back to the office, the mayor had a phone call from one of the.
No, I know, I know.
Like I said, I don't like to bring up things that are, you know, obviously, you know, we can all learn from it, but I mean, it's just, it's one of those things, and, and I think those people came in with the attitude that they made a statement, and we talk about people lying in public, they, you know, we bought this house because we were told we could do this. You know, and, and to make that kind of a statement in public, I mean, there's never, no way.
Hear that song and dance.
Well, I know, that's what I'm saying, that clearly, that's a false statement. And people do that, I mean, they, you know, they, they basically, you know, draw their lines in the sand and say, look, we were told we could do this, and now we're in a public meeting, and you try to stop, because that's really the. And basically, puts everybody on the defensive, goes all on the defensive, and like you said, they can move the driveway five feet and suddenly they're allowed to do it, so.
So that what they came in for variance for was just for the driveway?
I think that it shouldn't have just been the driveway, it should have been, again, I don't know how they possibly could have met lot coverage. How, the, the size of that structure, the size of their principal structure, I'm just saying, our whole site plane review ordinance, I don't know how they were able to do all that.
They had a huge lot.
It was, well, it was a huge lot, but it was a pie-shaped lot, and it was a, a lot that, they had what appeared to be a lot of borrowed open space, it wasn't necessarily theirs, because there had to have been a huge easement on that side of that. What I'm saying is, they were trying to take, you know, they had, had to have any utility easement between them and their neighbor, and they were trying to take credit for all of it. So, I, I mean, all I'm saying is, that, that's a kind of a litmus test of what people could try to do, you know.
I want to thank the planning commission, you guys spending your, your evening here, January thirteenth is coffee with the mayor, fourteenth is historic preservation, the eighteenth, the offices are closed. The twenty-fifth is the next meeting of the hall, and our next village board meeting is February one.
I'm sorry, just, just for, I think it says it was canceled on the fourteenth, next.
Okay, take that back, on my sheet this night, so, your credit.
We're seeking motion from the plant commission to adjourn.
Motion?
Second.
Motion, then please, second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you, that motion carries. We're seeking board consideration of the motion to adjourn to, to adjourn to executive session, as permitted under the open meetings act, to discuss the appointment, employment compensation, discipline performance, or dismissal of employees, or legal council act, should we approve?
So, so. Put that down, we're, we're.
All in favor?
Well, wait, I have to roll. Trustee Lam?
Yes.
Trustee Aurora?
Yes.
Trustee Beck?
Yes.
Trustee Jospe?
Yes.
Trustee Nunez?
Yes.
Thank you, that was chief's carry.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, thank you, Mike.
Happy New Year.
And just so the trustees don't eat at the lead, because apparently one of our officers, I tested, know the severity, but he was going to the hospital to check on.
Was that correct?